Grappling everybody welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District October 12th Board meeting. I am AESD Board President Juan Giver Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 5:30pm. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera, llame al 413-341-4696. Cuando se le pida presione el pin o la clave 624970315 y la tecla numeral. Any member of the public has an opportunity to address the board in person during the agendized public comment sessions, or they may choose to submit their public comments online by 12pm or in person by 6:30pm today. Comments submitted online will be read during the appropriate agendized public comment session. Let's begin with board roll call. To my right we have board member Mark Lopez.
Present.
We have a board member Paulo Macallas.
Here.
Board member Ryan Relis.
Here.
Board clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Here.
And I'm Juan Alvarez. Let's move on to item 1B, public speakers for closed session agenda items. There are none, right? Okay. And item two adjournment to closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So moved.
I'll go with, I'll go with a motion, Macallas, second Relis. Any discussion? All in favor of moving on to closed session say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move to closed session.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District October 12th Board Meeting. I'm A E S D Board President Juan Alvarez and I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. This meeting is being conducted in person and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al cuatro uno tres tres cuatro uno cuatro seis nueve seis. Cuando se le pida, presione el pin o la clave seis dos cuatro nueve cero. Nueve siete cero tres uno cinco y la tecla numeral. Let's begin with a flag salute. Dr. Downing?
Please stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Let's move on to introductions and roll call. Starting to my right, we have Board Member Mark Lopez.
Good evening. Hello.
We have Board Member Dr. Paolo Magallas.
Hey, everyone. It's great to see you all.
We have Board Member Ryan Ruelis.
Hello.
And Board Clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Hello.
I'm President Juan Alvarez. To my left, I have Superintendent Christopher, Dr. Christopher Downing.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening.
We have Dina Mellon, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Good evening.
Then we have Jessie Chavera, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
And then to my right, we have Tracy Golden, Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
Then we have Yesenia Ureño, Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening, everybody.
And in the back, we have, it looks like Jasmine, Anaya, and Alina Abelarroque are interpreters. And then we have Janice Cato to my left, our technology support technician. And then in the room to the back, we have Brian Brooks and Benjamin Hausman, our media production specialists. Let's move on to the report of closed session action taken. In closed session, the board voted five zero to suspend certificate employee number one zero one two two zero two two dash zero one without pay for five days. Also, in closed session, the board meant to discuss the claim of Christian Perez against the district. The board discussed the claim with its insurance carrier. Carrier, no formal action to resolve the claim has been taken by the board. All right, let's move on to the adoption of our agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I have motion, Ruelis. Second, Philbeck. Any discussion on the agenda? All right, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries five zero. Moving on to special order of business. Today, we have none. On to news and updates. Parent leadership groups. Looks like there are no parent leadership group updates. Association updates. There's one association update tonight provided by Faith Daverne, A E E A President. Welcome, Faith.
Good evening. Good evening, Board President, Board and Cabinet. First, I would like to thank the district's bargaining team for their professionalism and collaborative approach during bargaining. Thank you, Dina, for your leadership as A E E A and A E S D came to a timely agreement, avoiding unnecessary increases to health care for our A E E A membership. Thank you. We have had an exciting and positive start to the 22-23 school year. Unit members have participated in Start Smart, Back to School Night, Walk to School Day, parent teacher conferences, and first trimester report cards are just around the corner. It's been a great start, but as a result of the pandemic, there are some significant challenges to overcome in some of our classrooms. General education, dual language, and special education teachers are all facing extreme behaviors in the classroom, partly due to students who did not sit in a seat or socialize with other students for almost two years. Student behavior in some cases has become severe with students eloping, some showing aggression towards the classroom teacher, and some students needing tier two and tier three support on a daily basis. On behalf of A E E A, I want to thank A E S D leadership and the board for doubling the amount of counselors and behavioral intervention assistance in the schools and implementing the improved cost teams. This is a solid foundation that has produced significant progress, but there is still more work to do. During this time, teachers need a positive support system in place as they work through these post-pandemic challenges. A E S D has an opportunity to continue to take proactive measures and provide a and provide additional support and growth opportunities for our classroom teachers. A E E A would like to see additional support put into place so teachers can effectively manage behavior, continue to teach, and build positive relationships with students instead of spending the day putting out constant fires. A E E A is prepared to work with the district to create a teacher support position aimed at supporting teachers in the classroom as needs arise. I have had an initial conversation with Superintendent Downing and Assistant Superintendent Dina Mellon and welcome the support of the board as they bring forward a support system that will empower those teachers who request assistance and allow them to focus on their work and academic recovery and improved achievement for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Faith. All right, district news and updates. It looks like there are none this evening. Let's move on to public speakers, and I believe we do have a comment that was sent online and we have a speaker in person. Should we go with the in-person first? All right, so we have Valerie Garcia from Ponderosa, Madres en Acción. Valerie, you're welcome to come to the podium. Just so you know, Valerie, you have three minutes to speak. After you have one minute left, you will get a yellow card from Board Clerk Philbeck, and then that lets you know you have a minute left, and then when the red card goes up, that means your time is up. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. Say, having us because we're a group here. My name is Valerie, and actually, we are here with these letters, which are true histories that are happening in the school. We belong to Ponderosa School, which is elementary school. And I just want to share a little bit about testimony I had with my daughter last year, which is about security. A partner of her was threatened in fifth grade with a gun. So we're really concerned about the schools right now, especially students we have in elementary schools. So what can you expect in the future, especially in junior high school and high school, right? So I had a meeting with my husband and the principal, and nothing happened. So until now, we don't know what happened with the student. So we're really concerned about not only education, the level of education they have, but also we're concerned about security. What about cameras outside the school? What about kids and teachers being killed in United States? So this is really difficult right now for us to understand. But what about the schools? We know the schools receive donations. So what are you doing about it, right? So as I mentioned before, this is just a little testimony about myself, but here are mothers representing more students in the school. So we really need your help. We're here to be provided by you representing us. So please, we need an appointment. I think so far, I know Dr. Downing is with you. So also, Mr. Mark Lopez, also, we could do it with the principal in this school. We belong to a group which is called Madres en Acción Ponderosa, which is Mothers in Action if you want to call it like that. So we really, really need your help. We need here to find solutions. And we're going to give you these letters about the testimonies, and this is just a little bit because there are many, many more that maybe they can be heard. So that's why I'm here, representing my friends, my partners. And that's it. Thank you so much for having us, and please pay attention to our voice and what we're saying here. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take the letters. And then I believe we have another comment that was sent online. If you want to read it, please.
Yes, this comment was sent in by a staff member, and it reads as follows. "We believe that arts education is a vital part of a student's academic life. Arts education provides students with lifelong skills like creative problem-solving, self-expression, and an empathetic mind. Arts education helps students express themselves, explore others' perspectives, creates empathy, and engages students in critical thinking they can use for a lifetime. All students deserve equitable access to a complete education, which includes access to music and arts instruction during the school day. Prop 28 will dedicate eight hundred million of additional funding, or about 1% of the overall state education budget, to music and arts education in public schools without raising taxes as a measure allocates existing revenue from the state general fund, which currently has a surplus of nearly one hundred billion dollars. When students take arts classes, they benefit in many ways, including doing better academically, professionally, and emotionally. Vote yes on Prop 28 to ensure that students in our A E S D community have the equitable, well-rounded arts education they need to succeed."
Thank you. All right, let's move on. Let's move on to superintendent's report. We have a dual-language immersion update. Maria Villegas, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Magali Rodriguez, Coordinator of Multilingual Language Instruction. And Seong Kim, Curriculum Specialist. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you so much for having us this evening, Board President Alvarez, Board Members, Cabinet. It's our pleasure to always have the opportunity to share with you some specifics and updates of our dual-language program. I just wanted to take a moment before I turn it over to our coordinator, Magali, who's really leading the charge in supporting our dual-language program, just to take a moment to say thank you on behalf of our team and Ed Services, and specifically those many hands that are supporting our dual-language program, including our teachers. But specifically, Seong Young, you gave us an opportunity to hire a new specialist, our Korean specialist. She's not here present, but she's been invaluable, and she's just going to continue to strengthen the resources and the quality of programming that we have for our Korean dual-language. So I wanted to say thank you for that, and thank you for the team because we really have the right people supporting. With Lisette Sanchez also working directly in the classrooms as our dual-language TOS. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the wonderful presentation that Magali's put together for us with some brief updates on our program.
All right, thank you, Maria. Good evening, Board, Cabinet. It's a pleasure to be here again, and I'm looking down as if I have the presentation in front of me. This is new, so let me readdress. Hey, I'm happy to be here. We're going to go ahead and dive in and start right out of the gates with a large number, right? Impactful number. Three thousand one hundred and fifty-four students are the students that we serve as of yesterday. I know we added two more today, but yeah, side note, I guess I could say it, right? Three thousand one hundred and fifty-six students. That breakdown is in our Spanish-English DLI program, three thousand eighty students. In our Korean program, seventy-four. As you know, it's housed at Jefferson. So we are going to then follow that slide with a little bit more in-depth slide of our enrollment. I know that was a request in terms of where are we with enrollment? So you saw the impact number, right? A large number of who we serve. But this is a little bit more of a breakdown of our classes and then just giving you a larger picture of what's happening. And so basically, the breakdown that you see here in front of you is the max class size according to contractually where we are in terms of how many students can be in a classroom. And then the number right below it being how many students are actually there. So we're going to look, for example, TK for a second. Okay, so in TK, the max class size is two hundred and thirty-one, and we did that by calculating the amount of teachers. So we have eleven teachers in TK right now, DLI. And then the max class size, which is twenty-one, right? Multiply the numbers, and currently, we have two hundred and twenty-four there. Okay, so then we look at kindergarten, which is six hundred and twenty-one students within max class size, and then we have six hundred and fourteen students. Okay, so you can see there, and you see the number start to progress from there. So one thing that I did want to make sure that we understand with this graphic is class size increases as we move on in the grade levels, but we're starting with a smaller class size. So if we're starting with the class size of, let's say, twenty-one, and we move on to fourth grade, class size max is twenty-eight. So there's going to be that gap that starts to widen as we progress simply because of class size increase. And of course, we have attrition that happens, but here truly that number disparity is going to be in class size. So I want to make, we want to make sure that early enough, we're highlighting that so that we understand how the numbers are progressing and knowing that there is going to be space in our classes, especially in upper grade. That's what we're highlighting here, so you could see that projection as we move through. Okay, so we're going to then focus a little bit on our teachers with our DLI teacher collaboration. As you're aware, we do have, or we have had in the past, in-person DLI collaboration. And this is really just a space that we're providing for our teachers to come together. We know we are at all of our schools. But this is a way for them to come together across grade level. So let's say I'm teaching at Mann, but I'm going to collaborate with my peers now, my kindergarten peers at, let's say, Juarez, right? So they come together. We did shift them now to virtual space. Teachers are much more comfortable meeting virtually. They don't have to travel. And so this was a request from the teachers, and so you see the first one is for this year, it's going to be, or it will take place on October twenty-sixth, just to give you a little bit of a highlight here of what the attendance was like last year. So you'll see that the numbers are not jarring. There are not a lot of teachers that are attending. So we did make that switch to virtual, hoping that the numbers would increase. That happened in the April visit. And so one of the conversations that we obviously continue to say is like, what's happening, right? We're not, not everybody's attending considering that last year we had a hundred and twenty-one teachers total. And so one of the things that they have mentioned is that with PLCs at their own schools, we really have widened their lens in terms of them being to collaborate also with their own grade level at their school site and then having the ability to then collaborate vertically with the DLI team. And so they are acknowledging that they do have PLCs at their schools, but also that we're, there are support that's available now in time, right? We're able to act on their request a lot quicker now with Lisette and with Seong Young. And myself, we're able to call, we're able to jump on a meet really quick. Literally, they'll send us a meet, say, hey, can you meet right now? Sure, lunch aside. What's going on, right? That's what, they need us, and so we're able to respond, and so the collaborations are still going to live there as a space. And they are asking for us to bring, we've been very careful in protecting that time for it to be led by them, but they are asking us, hey, can you provide some agenda items? I'm like, okay, so we're starting to have those collaborate, or those conversations, if you will. So that's what you see here. Okay, next, we're going to move on to our pathway to the Seal of Bilingual.
Sorry to interrupt Ms. Rodriguez. I just had a quick question on the previous slide before you even go on. Just so I'm reading this correctly, those dates on the left in blue, is that, those are previous meetings that happened? The bottom two, February first, twenty twenty-two? Okay, so those are virtual meetings.
So the ones on the larger, on the larger slide, those are going to happen. Those are the ones that are slated for this year. The small gray box, those were last year's.
Okay, so it's the, this is school year. So is it just a typo for the?
Typo. February first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Twenty twenty-three. I want to stay in twenty twenty-two. That means I don't get a year older, but, oh.
Thank you.
Personal there. Yes, you are correct. That should be twenty twenty-three. All the i's, and we didn't catch that. Well, you know, make sure you're watching. Thank you for that. Yes, so the pathway to the Seal of Bilingual is a word. This graphic shows. And just so, right out of the gates, the year below, for example, the very last bar, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. So you can see the trend, and a couple of things have happened here. One, that we've been growing, we've been expanding. We went from one school, added a second school, and then a third school, which is what's reflective here on twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And this year, we have also added Ross and Ponderosa, so we expect, we should see those numbers continue to rise with the addition of two more classes, sixth-grade classes this year. And just a quick reminder that we did also add the kindergarten pathway and the third-grade pathway this year. So we're super excited. We did shift with the portfolio option, opening and widening the ability of students to attain that award. Okay, now bilingual authorization, Spanish cohort. So we did partner up with Cal State Fullerton this school year, knowing that there's a lot more interest in our own current A E S teachers who are teaching in an English immersion classroom to teach in a dual-language setting. And so nine of those current English immersion teachers are participating in this cohort. And it's separated, the cohort is separated into two semesters, one being in this past summer and then one currently in this fall. And so it, the first, the first course was this summer, and it was a culture course. So here, it really focuses on the pedagogy behind culturally responsive teaching. It looks at practicum. It looks at what does that look like to be a teacher? But then how do you shift that mindset into how do you make that classroom culturally responsive? But also looking at it through a more global lens. And then it's also beyond just, let's say, Latin American countries or even Korean culture within the classroom, but really broadening that outside of what's happening in the, in a classroom. And so this one was a very intense course, not going to lie. It was five weeks. You can see there, it was Tuesdays and Thursdays from five fifteen to nine forty-five, and all nine of our participants successfully completed that course. And currently, they are, now if we move over to the fall side, this is the methods course. So this is now where they're expected to actually apply their learning along with moving and experiencing what that looks like in a DLI classroom. And so this is a sixteen-week course in person at Cal State Fullerton. And I'm already chuckling because the class is on Friday nights from four to six forty-five. If that doesn't say commitment, I don't know what does, right, on a Friday evening? But they're there, and they're, it's currently in progress. And where we are in the scope of things is they're currently fulfilling their twenty hours of field work in a DLI classroom. So that piece, I really need to highlight because our district is covering not only the cost of these two courses, but they're also covering the cost of the teachers being able to be released and actually, they're not using their own time. Like, we are coming in and covering classes. Ed Services is covering. I was there today, subbing in heels. And we have the hours being covered, and so they're already reporting back, though. I did see the teacher today that was coming back to her school. I'm sure she was making sure that her class was okay. And she's, she was elated. She was just sharing. She's like, wow, I never realized how much is happening in a DLI classroom. But she was also looking at the similarities, because we don't want to scare them off in saying it's completely different. But we talked about those similarities as well of what she's already doing, and then what are some tweaks that she's going to then layer when she does become a DLI teacher hopefully next year? Because these nine participants will be ready at the end of this December. They will be able to apply to CTC to obtain their bilingual authorization. So that's fantastic.
Magali, I'm sorry to interrupt, just because I'm curious with regards to this number nine. That's great. How did we recruit? How did we promote? And is this the BECOM program? Same? Okay.
Yeah, no, this is not the BECOM project. So it's strictly funded with district funds. And so we put flyers. We had it on our, on our social media. We had it on our website. I hosted a couple of information meetings as well with the presentation. We had the professor there with me, just as a sounding board in case they had very specific questions that I couldn't answer, which I was able to answer, by the way. But it was, you know, we invited them. I think it's always good for them to see a familiar face, knowing that we are working together. I've lived it. I've done it. And so those nine, I think it was eleven or twelve that were on the fence, nine that went for it. And again, it is a commitment, so there are times. Some of them had children, so we understand. But I know some have already asked, hey, are we going to do this again? So I'm going to go ahead and put that, and say that now, so, yeah.
Ms. Rodriguez, could I just add?
Yes.
She also follows up with teachers that are eligible to participate. So I think that personal touch really provides assistance.
I have had a, there was one that I talked to for, I think, four years, and finally, she's at Loera. Hi, hi, first-grade teacher at Loera. Yeah, she's like, oh, my gosh, okay. But she just needed to hear it. Like, she wanted to, and I knew she wanted to, but it's like, come on, this is your year. This is your year. So, yeah. Okay, so we're going to hone in on Korean DLI. So as Maria mentioned, a big shout out to Seong Young, who is our Korean specialist, who's focusing on all things Korean, and she has definitely hit the floor running with the team. So a lot of the items, we were already providing for our teachers in our classrooms, but there is nothing. It's priceless when you have that Korean heritage lens that you're able to do. And so we not only are moving forward, but we're also taking a little bit of a step back in terms of looking at what we have already created. And we are revamping some of the items, and they're fine tweaks, but we are amazing for a reason, right? And we're never done. The work is truly never done. And so we have been looking at our CCPST, which is basically assessing phonics aligned with California Spanish, or California Common Core standards, if I should say. And then so we are also looking at our sound spelling cards. We made some tweaks in making the font larger, but also what are the images? Are those the most appropriate images? So we're really looking at, almost like a fine-tuned comb, right? Now, we're actually looking even deeper, and so we are revamping some of those items. Also, within our assessments here, you'll see benchmark and progress monitoring. We had that. But we, I really wanted to bring in more of what we call our language or actual standards, right? Those are the world language standards and seeing, when you think of a less frequently taught language, which Korean is, you turn to some of the world language aspects of it. And so we are making sure that because it is a Level Four language, And so we are making sure that because it is a level four language, we're able to align those assessments accordingly. So that is the work that is being there, or done there. And then on the creating side, actually building, um, the first bullet there, which I'm very proud of, is adding a non-transferable column to the Korean language standards. And so, um, the, one of the professors who is on our curriculum development team for Korean helped create Korean language standards. So she already had those standards, but I felt that the non-transferable was really missing there. So if we look at our, our, San Diego County of Ed created the Spanish Language Arts Standards, but they added what has now been coined as the Blue Standards, or our non-transferable standards. And that is what we're mimicking after this. So what that means is, those are the items that do not exist in the English language, but that cannot be overlooked when you're learning or acquiring that Korean language. And so that's the column, and so we, of course, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. It's not only identifying what those non-transferables are, but the trick is really gonna be in putting them in the right grade. So that's what we, that's the next layer. What, is it appropriate for kindergarten, given our population of students and giving with, um, the, the Korean language that they do have? And so then, um, with our?
I'm sorry, I wanted to ask, could you give an example of the known, something non-transferable?
Yeah, so a non-transferable, one thing that I learned right away was the usage of plurals in Korean. We, plurals are not the same in Korean, they don't add an S or an ES. In fact, um, their plurals are a lot less abundance, if you will, but they, they will call it, for example, like, one pencil, two pencil, three pencil, not pencils. And so what does that look like? It's very different, right? So the way that you would, um, learn it in English versus Korean. So that's what, just one example of what that non-transferable, and so where do they learn that? Do they learn that in Kinder? Do they learn that in first? When do we apply this? And so there's, there's so much to do there. And so I've learned a lot when it comes to the, just the Korean language. I'm not fluent, but I can tell you a lot of the syntax behind it now. So it's been, it's been a blessing for me to be able to do that as well. Um, so, given our focus on literacy, you'll see there, we're honing in on language and foundational skills, as well as Korean phonics awareness, in terms of, again, that year-long process. And so it's very different than our approach to English and Spanish. Those are romance languages, they're very similar, right? Their sentence structure and syntax, Korean is very different. It's a level four versus a level one language. And so that phonemic awareness is going to take longer. So let's say we're expecting students to have most of their sounds generated by end of Kinder in Korean. It's gonna take a year and a half or two years, and we need to know that, that needs to be laid out, so that when we look at our, our student, we're not saying, oh, they're far behind. Actually, they're right where they need to be, it's just a lot slower. So doing that work there. And then in terms of TWIG science, um, science, we cannot control what publishers create or don't create, unfortunately. Um, so TWIG, we couldn't buy off the shelf, if you will, in Korean, but we have been able to now translate, provide, um, what is in print, if you will, but then there's those videos and those songs, right? So we are going to work on finding replacement videos, if you will. So we're doing magic there in terms of being able to still provide the resource that the teachers need to instruct the students accordingly. So you see, um, there, and then we have front-loading slides for social studies as well. There's some slides that we have created in order to support the language that the students are going to see. So this is what's coming in the lesson. These are some of the front-loading, um, that you would be seeing here as well. Okay, so very busy on the side of Korean, and also with Spanish. So here is a very quick slide on DLI professional development, what's been happening. I don't intend to read the whole slide, thank goodness, right? But you have it here. I will highlight a couple of items, though. Um, one of the things that we continue to look at is language development in DLI. It's very different, the way that we approach language development, it looks different, depending on who the student is. Um, so that we continue to talk about. Um, we did have the matriculation going up to third grade. So in third grade, is one of the most difficult grades in general, no matter what language you teach. Um, but we, this was the first time in third grade where students were receiving literacy in English for the first time. So we have the Sound Spelling Transference Kit. So, well, you heard me mention non-transferables already. This kit provides a teacher the ability to see what are the gaps that students need to fill in order to bridge Spanish into English. So that's one of the PDs we've been looking at. On the Korean side, you can see here, I'm looking specifically at how the Korean curriculum works. We have a fantastic curriculum program, or program already created. How do you effectively use it to its, its max potential? So that's what you see there. And then we have on both sides, upcoming PDs are the Guiding Principles for Dual Language Education. And you're gonna see a little bit farther on the presentation why that's impactful in terms of our teachers understanding the structure of DLI. Not just teaching in a, in a partner language, but what does DLI mean? Okay, so here's our successes, and I was told I could only do one slide.
Hold on, Magali, before you move on, are we still in partnership with Cal State Long Beach, with their Korean professors?
So, um, they are really careful that we don't call them Long Beach, because they are working independently. Um, but one of the professors does work at Long Beach, um, and then there's two more professors, and then we have our Korean editor in Korea. And so, but yes, they are professors of, of, um, one of them specifically is Korean literacy. So that is her strength, and she's the one that created those Korean language standards. So she's on our team, yay. Very exciting. Yeah. All right, oops, successes. Okay, so as I mentioned, one slide, um, you can see here some of what we have already mentioned throughout the presentation. So it is meant to be a little bit of a summary, um, all the curriculum resources. And we, I feel, we all feel very strongly that that is definitely an area of strength. Um, we have, we're very, we're very good at being proactive, not necessarily reactive, with what are some of the items that are needed for teachers, something that's gonna be impactful and meaningful that they can utilize. Um, classroom support, as you heard Maria mention earlier, with our teacher on special assignment in Spanish, and also a Korean specialist and myself, we're able to get in there, right? We get calls, we're, we're able to really support, um, the classroom teacher. And then we have our Korean and Spanish pathway, which again, you heard me mention already. We were already doing the pathway award, and then with the new shift and California Department of Ed taking it over, we added Kinder and third grade. Okay, and then we are, because we are such a great district, correction, the most amazing district, um, we do have reclassification in all three languages, that's very unique to us. Um, we are the only district to reclassify in all three languages. Um, we also provide a DLI leadership series to all of our leaders. We continue that path, because it doesn't matter how many times we hear it, we need that support when we are spearheading a program of this magnitude and of this importance. And then we do continue, gotta toot our horn a little bit here, we do continue to serve as a model program. This, we have already been visited by two districts, and a third is coming soon. Um, they're actually here, visiting on-site, and I love those visits, because we learn from them as much as they're learning from us, too. Um, that's part of what keeps us going, is really picking their brain, too. Um, I get calls, I get calls by a lot of people around here and in other states, too, which is fascinating to me, because then I start asking them a bunch of questions, too, which is always powerful for us as well. Okay, and then we go with our challenges slide. Um, this one's always hard for me to create, because I'm like, this is so great. But these areas are areas that we continue to develop, because that's what makes us, that's what sets us apart. And so the first item there you'll see is the parent and teacher understanding of program structure. Now, you heard me mention earlier how we want to provide, or we will be providing PD for our teachers on the guiding principles of bilingual education or of a dual language program. And that is just a conversation that we need to continue to have. We have to keep it alive, we have to understand. So for, and on the parent's side, when your, your child's starting TK or Kinder, and you're pumped, and you just heard the presentation, you're like, this is fantastic, yes, sign me up. And then by first grade or second grade, like, whoa, wait a minute, what, what did I sign up for? Oh, wait, my neighbor is speaking English, and my student is, what's going on? And so here is continuing to have that conversation. So we have provided, last year, and will continue this year, parent information meetings at all grade levels. Not only the first time, we know when we signed up, but having those conversations, what you can expect in second grade. Oh, hey, third grade is coming up, guess what, this is what's gonna happen in third grade. And so we're providing that, those arenas for parents to be able to come, ask their questions, um, maybe, you know, for us to debunk some myths there, um, so just keeping us, you know, connected. And then on the second bullet, really pertains more to our Korean DLI program in terms of heritage families. We know that within a dual language setting, we always want to have heritage speakers, as well as, um, students that have only English in the home. And this is unique to us, because we do have students that are learning possibly three languages. We have to remember, we're serving our community, so it's possible that they have Spanish in the home only, but are coming to our class, or to our schools to learn English and Korean. So it's a beautiful thing, although it is a challenge, we do see, um, we are serving our community. And that's, that is exactly what we're supporting and mitigating in our classrooms. And then we'll see here that, you already heard me mention this, we cannot control, we cannot control what publishers choose to create or not create, but we're here to support and create what is necessary. And so, um, yeah, adhering to the language of instruction in the classroom beyond the lesson. So here, um, we have to remember that instruction is happening all the time in the classroom. And so what I mean by that is we can be create, delivering a beautiful lesson in the partner language, whether that be Spanish or Korean. And the minute we go into transition, like, okay, boys and girls, now get your books out. We're like, whoa, wait, what happened? You're still in Spanish? So it's just getting that shift, because we are, um, again, it's teaching a dual language setting. It's beyond just teaching in the partner language. It's, it's a whole environmental shift, and so, again, supporting those teachers to be able to do that. Um, and then hiring biliterate support staff, that continues to be a challenge, but it continues to be what we support, and sites supporting that bilingual intervention. So, um, that one ties directly back to our, our school sites hiring bilingual staff, really, truly. Um, and then we are, when it comes to the intervention piece, though, we have worked and provide models of how a teacher can in, provide intervention, self-contained as well, so that that piece is not forgotten, it's still handled. But again, when we're highlighting what could be done, would be that hiring of support.
Miguel, what, Miguel, Magali, I'm so sorry. Uh, I apologize. What are the specific tiles with our support staff? And what do we specifically need with support staff? Bilingual support staff?
Um, support staff could be, for example, we have, um, we have TOESAs IN, what we call Teacher on Special Assignment Intervention, that are hired at the school site. And so our hope is that the, the teachers that they're hiring to provide that intervention support are bilingual. Not all of them are, right? Because, um, you know, it just depends on who is applying and the best candidate for the job, right? So that is what I mean by that, that's one specific area. Um, other, other supports could be like our, our resource teachers, I, I don't want to mess up the name, but ed specialists, right? Ed specialists, yes, or ed specialist teachers, too, that are providing services. They're not always bilingual either. And so it, it's gonna look different at every school site, depending on who their staff is.
Okay. And the higher ed systems preparing eligible candidates?
Yeah.
It's really, we're, it's really a give and go between us and, and Cal State Fullerton. Excuse me, we're always having the conversation, it's not just preparing K6 teachers with a bilingual authorization, we need to have ed specialists, we need to have psychologists, we need to have speech-language pathologists. So it's just the system's catching up with the rate with which this is growing. Um, but I feel really proud that oftentimes, we're the district selected. It used, Magali and I had a conversation, it used to be a larger district south of us a little bit. Um, but now people are coming here because of the, um, great programming and support, I think, that's there.
Yeah, that is true, we are taking stuff. Um, okay. So hot off the press, coming soon. I am very excited to really be the first to be able to deliver this information. Um, again, we're constantly looking at what can we do better, what can we provide for our students? And so one of the things that we continue to hear is books, right? Just library books, books in students' hands. Um, we get that they have access virtually to a lot, or digitally to a lot of items, but, um, we, what we're working on right now is generating a list of, twofold, a list of books that include high-interest books, right? Books that's, our students actually want to read, that make sense to them, um, but that are also compatible with our motivation approach, with this through AR. So again, they can read a high-interest book, but also be able to take a quiz on it, right? Gain some points. Um, so here, the, this is, um, the plan is to be able, for us to generate a list that every single school would receive a robust library set, uh, in Spanish at the respective schools, and in Korean at Jefferson. And so this is huge, because now students will be able to have multiple copies of the same book that they are all wanting to, I taught fifth grade for many years, and we all had that book that they all were waiting for, right? Even if, like, they didn't even know what the book was, the fact that it's missing for five weeks, right? And so we're able to do that, um, so this is exciting. We're able to now provide this, so again, um, it's not gonna add an extra burden to the schools. We're gonna generate the list, we will be purchasing the books, and then we will be delivering the books to each of the schools as well, so they will all have access. And then we'll be looking at determining the, the amount of books, and then if they have adequate space for them, providing that space as well, logistics. So it's almost like a big package all with the bow, right? Here you go, here are the books, ready for our students. So that is a huge endeavor. I know it's, um, been something that has been allocated and prepared for, and so it's always a good news when we can put more books in students' hands.
Any questions?
I do. Um, Magali, can you go back to the page that had all the data in regards to each of the grade levels? And if we can look at that?
Of course. Whoa, sorry.
There you go. So my question is, is this kind of, do we see a big drop-off from third grade to fourth grade because of how the, uh, program is only through, um, sixth grade up through Ross and Ponderosa, and only a handful of schools versus the other school sites?
So the number, talking about this specific graph, right? And so, yeah, so you see the, the big shift there, because there's only 10 classes versus 27 classes.
Got you.
Yeah, so in, um, fourth grade, we have 10 classes, and fifth grade, nine classes, and sixth grade, currently eight classes, as opposed to 25, 26, and 27 in the primary grades.
Got you, awesome. And then, um, with that in mind, is that typically the grade level between third and fourth, where we do see the biggest drop-off?
Surprisingly enough, it's not. It's actually in second grade. I call it the second grade scare, nobody else does, I do. Um, but it's really where we have the most fear, um, because right about now, we're starting to have a lot of readers, right? And so we start the comparison. Um, and it really is that way. Even if you understand the program, it's like, wait a minute, my, well, my child is not reading English, and my neighbor is, like, what's happening? Till all the questions start to arise, right? Or now that they've seen all the Spanish happening, it's like, okay, so he's learning Spanish, so now can he learn English? Right, that, that situation, again, it goes back to tying it back to, it is our duty to ensure that they understand the program structure and how language is acquired, which is a very slow process. So that is, second grade is that year, we really watch.
Awesome, and I just wanted to commend you guys on basically approaching it with, meeting with them yearly, and not just the one group in the beginning, and that's awesome. So, cool, great, thank you, great presentation.
That's so funny, you shared the second grade scare. Three of my four nieces and nephews are in dual immersion programs, and I shared before this, in Hawaii, right? They do Hawaiian immersion, and they, my whole family, you know, were very protective of our, uh, you know, our keiki, the kids.
Yeah.
And they had that, and we were, you know, from both sides, they were questioning it. But you have to trust in the process. It will catch up towards fourth, fifth, sixth grade, right?
I think that's where we have to keep that conversation, that's why it is one of the, will continue to be our challenge, but also our greatest gift, to be able to continue to communicate with the families and stay connected.
Right? Uh, and all I have to share is, uh, also say is great work. I, I love these updates, uh, and the progress we're having, uh, with DLI, and I'm always in complete 100% support, that we're leading the way, uh, not only in the state, but in the nation as well, and that we are the model district that people are always, uh, looking to. So, so, so proud, always proud, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez, and I just want to thank you and your entire team for taking the time to provide us another one of these periodic update, updates. Um, they're very helpful for me to see all of the data, see it very visually laid out, looks great, and it's easy to read. And I think it's helpful just to showcase that to all of our families, so, so that, in the public, so that they know what's going on in our district. Um, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, the next slide regarding the dates, um, I'm not gonna ask you about the dates again. But, um, uh, I, well, I did have a question about October 26th. Has there been a Google form, uh, that's been sent out? Do we know what, um, the RSVP list looks like? Has there been an interest in this? I know we're two weeks away, but, um, do we have a, a high level of interest based on what some of the previous meetings have been? The attendance has been a little low, so are we promoting that availability out?
Yeah, we, um, so we have a very clear connection with our teachers. It's at a very, um, it's not a, we're accessible, what I'm trying to say. And so we did just email them last week as a reminder, um, letting them know, it's on their calendar. Um, so it's not necessarily an RSVP, like, hey, but it's a little reminder on their calendar, like, hey, this is happening. Um, and we are, they do have the, the list we give them, or the date, sorry. We give them to them at the planning day that we had right in the summer, right before the school year started, so that they could plan accordingly. We remind them through email, and then, um, we are connecting by adding it to their calendar, as well as an invite, as an invitation, but not necessarily an RSVP. We did, it is not mandated, it is optional. And so, um, we want to make sure that they know that, that there is flexibility there.
Okay, great, I think it's important, because things come up in life, and, but as long as they know that that's an option, and that the resource is there. Um, I also appreciated the library books, um, that you mentioned, because I've attended, uh, school site visits at several different sites, and that's one thing And that's one thing that's come up multiple times is, we need more books in the library. I know we did receive some donations, but if it's the Encyclopedia Britannica, it's probably not going to be something that we're choosing to read in English, let alone Spanish. So I appreciate we're doing that. I know each of the libraries at the school sites have a budget. Is that something we're purchasing from the district? Or is it, are we assisting our sites?
Yes, this is a district purchase to assist our sites.
Okay, great. All right, thank you very much. And then I know in January, there was a, we talked about reclassification. In January, I think it's about 104 Spanish reclassifications. Do you have an updated number on that? I realize Korean is still relatively new. We probably don't have any reclassification on that. But if you could just get that data, just see how much progress we've made since, I think it was January 10th, I think was the last data that was available.
I don't have the updated number right now in terms of the reclassification. But I know we are looking at a couple of Korean students, knowing that it is going to be a little bit slower on the Korean side.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure, I wanted to add a few things. I just, from this journey of a few years and watching this program expand and grow and flourish, I'm just really proud of seeing how we're growing as a district with regards to how we approach teaching language.
Yeah.
Right? And so we're becoming experts through practice and it's just really apparent. And so I really do appreciate everyone involved in growing our programs and learning how to be the best instructor of language and then then becoming the model for everybody else, like was mentioned earlier. So just a lot of pride behind that. So we really appreciate all your work. And then just to go back to the second grade scare, it happened to us. All right, so it happens to every family. And I think that's something that needs to be widely shared. Actually, I just, I spoke to somebody who works at my site and their family is experiencing the same thing. And so you freak out as a second grade parent. You're like, my child doesn't read English yet. And so I think it's just a matter of just, I think maybe if we can capture some stories of our past parents who now have sixth graders or have high school students who are like, who have college students attending top-rated universities, right? It's okay, you're going to get through it. Your child is going to, it's going to click, usually around third grade halfway through and boom, oh my gosh, they're reading, right? So it happens. And I think, one thing I think we maybe miss, maybe don't look at is, are we informing our administrators of this? And do our administrators know how to articulate this to our parents, right? So when a parent calls a school and says, my second grader can't read this book in English, and they're freaking out and they're like, I'm going to pull him out of dual language. And you're like, no, don't do it. Right? Because if our, if our office staff, if our administrators are able to just be like, no, the research is going to prove you wrong, right? Just believe in us, we're going to do this, your child will be fine. If everyone involved is, I guess you could say, just like educated on the process, right? And I know we do a good job of like every, every year, meeting with parents and letting them know, this is going to happen. But then some of our parents don't go to those meetings, unfortunately, right? They're working or they can't get to that. So if we can have another buffer of security with making sure our staffs are able to articulate that, I think it'll help a lot of our families get through the stress, right? Because it is stressful and everyone's looking out for the best interest of their child. And unfortunately, what happens is in some of the cases, a parent will end up pulling their child from dual language. You're like, no, you're like, you're, you're missing, your child's going to miss out on something really phenomenal. So just my two cents on how I experienced that. So, but yeah, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to continued expansion and how we, how we grow. Thank you.
Really quick one, we do provide the DLI Leadership Series for our administrators. And that's happening three times throughout the year. And it's been now, I think it's the third or fourth year. And those are the things that keep coming up, right? It was, and what I say coming up is as a reminder to them, giving them the language, almost like the next layer of this is, this is what we say. And I also have conversations with them one-on-one. They called me, they're like, hey, they don't ask anymore, but to be like, hey, can you call that parent? I'm like, no, I'm going to tell you what to say, right? Like, because it's really in the education piece. I live and breathe it. So I know for me, it's really easy to just be able to have those conversations because I've had it so many times throughout the years. But it is really arming them with the knowledge and what to say when they're, like, sometimes they know it, but they're just feeling empowered that they can actually have these conversations. So yeah, that is happening to the back, behind the scenes, if you will, for them, to be able to have those conversations.
Yeah, it's also environmental, if you think to, if I'm thinking about my family as an immigrant family, right? And coming here and expecting that their children are going to be English speakers, right? And then not seeing that happen in second grade and then you freak out, right? So we have to be cognizant of our families and the majority of our families have that kind of thought because they don't know anything different, right? So it's just about having those conversations. So I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good, all right.
All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There is no discussion on these items unless a member of the board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Are there any items that you would like pull, pull numbers?
Just a clarification. Do Mark and I have to abstain when we are getting, when we're going to a dinner and it's in the consent calendar?
I don't think so.
We don't have to abstain, do we, for that? Okay, that was just a clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't, yeah, I was trying to remember.
There's no conflict of interest or anything.
Okay.
Anybody want to pull anything? You good? Okay. All right, may I have a motion to ratify the consent calendar as is?
So moved.
Motion from Ruelis.
Second.
Second, Macalas. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of ratifying the consent calendar, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Let's move on to action calendar. We have superintendent's office. It's recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number 2022-23/17, designating the week of November 7th through 11th, 2022, as Psychology Awareness Week throughout the Anaheim Elementary District. I have a motion, Macalas.
Second.
Second from Ruelis. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Educational services, there are none. SLP, none. Let's move on to human resources, item D. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the tentative agreement between the district and Anaheim Elementary Education Association, AEEA. The major fiscal considerations of the agreement include a 5.25 increase to the 2021-2022 base salary effective July 1st, 2022, a one-time off-schedule payment equal to 2% increase to the unit members' 2022-2023 base salary, and increase, an increase to the district's health benefits maximum contribution cap equal to 1.6% of AEEA units' 2022-2023 base salary schedule, and a one-time district contribution to the health benefit plan.
So moved.
I have a motion from Macalas.
Second.
Second, Lopez, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Item two, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the tentative agreement between the district and California School Employees Association, CSEA. The major fiscal considerations of the agreement include a 5.25% increase to the unit members' 2021-2022. Okay, I have a motion from Ruelis. Second from Philbeck, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Okay, let's move on to item three. It's recommended the Board of Education approve a 5.25% salary increase for the classifications on the provisional salary schedule effective October 13th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Philbeck, second, Ruelis, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Item four, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the agreement between the district and Anaheim Elementary School Management Association, ASMA. The major fiscal considerations of the agreement include a 5.25% increase to the 2021-2022 base salary effective July 1st, 2022, a one-time off-schedule payment equal to 2% increase to the ASMA members.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Ruelis. Second, Philbeck, any discussion?
One of the reasons why I'm just moving all these is because of the fact that it's the exact same language, every single one, so.
I get you, okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Let's move on to item five. It is recommended the Board of Education approve a 5.25% increase to the employees' 2021-22 base salary effective July 1st, 2022, off-schedule payment equal to 2% increase to the unit members of the 2022-2023 base salary. An increase, wow, I'm reading backwards. An increase to the district's health benefits maximum contribution.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, Macalas, second, Ruelis. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Okay. All right, item six, it's recommended the Board of Education approve a 5.25%, increase in the monthly rate of pay for the board members of the Board of Education from $444 per month to $468 per month, per person, effective July 1st, 2022, off-schedule payment equal to 2% increase to the board members' 2022-2023 base salary, an increase to the district health benefit maximum contribution cap equal to 1.6% of ASMA's 2022-2023 base salary schedule and a one-time district contribution to the health benefit plan.
So moved.
Okay, motion, Ruelis?
Very enthusiastic, second.
Second, Lopez. Any discussion?
Just a discussion real quick and to just once again, give accolades to the bargaining team in regards to getting this taken care of with all of our various associations and all of their teams. Bargaining was awesome. We're very proud of all the work that you all did, coming in prepared, doing your research, very thorough. Kudos to you, Mr. Jesse, and your team. So I applaud you and I applaud our associations for getting bargaining taken care of in a timely fashion. Kudos to all you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries, five zero. Okay, moving on to item E, administrative services, there are none. Let's move on to item 10, board discussion. Board member activities related to school business, starting with trustee Lopez.
All right, thank you very much, Board President Alvarez. I wanted to start off my board report with my walk-to-school day that I had two of them on October 5th. First was at James Gwynn Elementary. Got up bright and early for, I think it was a 6:30, get there at 6:30 arrival, just to be there a little early with traffic. I was able to get my steps in, which was great, up to Gwynn. Want to thank City of Anaheim. They had a couple of officers there that would help to escort the students to make sure that we all got to school safely. Parents who were there, a lot of signage, which I thought was great, to increase that visibility as all the students were walking to school. Then I hustled over to Orange Grove Elementary. And staff was stationed strategically, several different corners throughout the neighborhood. So everything was really well organized. Just wanted to give some appreciation to our school sites, our teachers, and other staff who were able to get up and get out there and get their walking shoes on. It was great. I know I needed the exercise and the fresh air, so I appreciated it. Gave me a reason to get up. So I might be doing that more often, maybe. Maybe. And then later that afternoon, I attended the tail end of the LCAP meeting. I was able to make it right after work. I was able to be here in this very room. So a great discussion that was had there. I was able to kind of fill in, I think, for Dr. Heiner as he stepped out. So I was able to fill in for him at that, one of the tables. So it was a very seamless transition there. So great turnout. Thank you, Dr. Grace and Dr. Downing for really facilitating that meeting as always. October 6th, I was able to attend a couple of other events. First off, our Anaheim Outdoor Science Education Foundation Bowling Fundraiser. We had over 100 staff that attended, that took over concourse lanes. And either attended, participated, or attempted to bowl at some level. I did not participate. I did not want to embarrass myself that night. So I kind of sat out as a spectator. But next year, next year, I might put my bowling shoes on. It was really great to be back. It is in-person event. We had a couple-year hiatus as a result of COVID, but it was great that everybody was back. I did want to give a special thanks to Mr. Bob Gardner, who was also there. I know Ms. Philbeck will also be sharing about this a little bit as well. But it's great that he still is spearheading the organization of this very worthwhile event. It's just super important for our sixth graders that it helps them with their fundraising to have this opportunity to get out, out in the outdoors. Here we are in a very suburban, urban area. So many of our students may not have ever got out of Orange County before. So it's a great opportunity. So just wanted to thank him as well. Then I had to head over to, or I got to head over to the convention center. Did see trustee Ruelis there as well for our College and Career Day, which was hosted kind of organized by UHSD. I know Dr. Grace was there. I just missed her. But we did have some other staff who was there, Yessenia, one of our counselors, Rosie, was there as well. And it's one of our education partners, our pledge partners. So we had a booth. It was a great turnout. I mean, there were a lot of people there, getting a lot of great information. And we did have the invite to our students and families also to attend our fourth through sixth graders to experience the College and Career Fair, as well as kind of the career technical education pathways that are offered at our high school district as they're promoting up. On Monday, October 10th, I was able to attend an update on the Boys in Park Partial Closure Meeting. Anaheim staff was there. I know that we're kind of working closely with them. So I just want to ask that we continue to have a presence at those meetings because questions do come up about what's happening with Anaheim Elementary, what's happening at Roosevelt and the surrounding area. So that would be my request, is that we continue to be there just in case questions or any kind of misinformation, not necessarily intentional, but if anything does come up, we want to make sure that we're there as a presence as well. And then I also did want to thank our administrators. It's our week of the school administrator. So thank you to all your, all you administrators out there for the contribution that you make to the successful pupil achievement that we have here in Anaheim Elementary. And it's also National School Lunch Week. So the theme this year is peace, love, and school lunch. I think it's kind of a 60s theme. So I don't know how many of the students are really, you know, plugged in on that. But it's also the inaugural implementation of our School Meals for All. So it's kind of an important connection there, that nexus. So I want to thank all of our food service workers who provide meals for all of our scholars on a daily basis. So thank you. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Lopez, Dr. Macalas.
Thank you, Mr. President, and happy Administrator of the Week to two of our trustees as well, in addition to all amazing Anaheim Elementary administrators, Ryan Ruelis, as well as Juan Alvarez. Also, what is it, School, National School Lunch Week? Thank you so much to all of our staff who do that. The only thing I have to report for this week is I've actually finally, for the first time, this early on, paid membership to all the PTAs in my trustee area, no, 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 in my trustee area. Still not making that much yet. But I do plan on joining outside of my trustee area this school year. So thank you.
I'm sorry, I was a little taken aback because it took me literally all last year and I only got to 20, membership of 20 of them. So that's true, that's true. So I, yeah, I was taken aback. I was like, wow, that's impressive. Kudos to you. Yes, so the College and Career, I was able to attend the College and Career event over at Gwynn. Great reception. They were really, really, they were just fantastic overall. They had a really good setup, really good presentations, and they were very flexible with me with me in the sense of my schedule, which was nice. Unexpected meetings sometimes do pop up. And so as a result, scheduled to go Monday, but they easily accommodated me on Tuesday. So that was very nice of them. So kudos to Lupe and her team over at Gwynn. Speaking to a third grade class and a sixth grade class, just super fun. Then later on, the next day, I went to the Walk to School Day. And of course, I'm not going to be outdone by my colleague here, Trustee Lopez. I too, went to two schools. I went and started my day off over at Lincoln Elementary School and it was super fun. It was, it was a great event. Energy was high. People were very excited and everybody was positive. But the highlight for me personally was a former student of mine who I've watched grow up, who became a Simon Scholar, which is a pretty prestigious scholarship that we have in partnership with the Simon Scholars Foundation, who later on went to UCI. It was awesome because she basically ended up being our police officer. She's in her second year of Anaheim Police Department. And it's always nice as a former teacher, an educator, to always get those kudos from those students who say, hey, thank you. You really pushed me and made sure that, you know, I stayed focused. And so that, that made my day in itself, you know? And then we walked to school. And then I went over to, afterwards, headed over to Roosevelt and hung out there. Roosevelt, once again. They had probably more of a turnout, I would say, than Lincoln, but I would probably say it's because of the 45-minute time difference of when they go to school. So I don't mind. I'm sure those parents didn't mind basically getting there between 7:30 and 7:45 and walking and doing that. And then the last thing was the College and Career Fair that the Anaheim Union High School District hosted over at the Convention Center. I always get so nervous for this, just because of the fact that we've had the last two years, virtually, has it been two or three years virtually? The last two years have been virtually and there's always hiccups and it's always like, we're crashing the system and what's happening? And there's no one in my reading room, you know, that I want to come in and not this time around. This time around, it was full, same ahead. It was awesome. Lots of high energy. People were there, buses upon buses. There was even a school from Montebello that showed up, a busload of students that came because they'd heard about it. And so it was great to see our students from Anaheim Elementary School District there. It was great to see just our students from throughout all of AUHSD there. And it was great to see some of my colleagues there as well, including Trustee Lopez and then, of course, Trustee Alvarez, who had to do both duties as a dad, as well as basically the assistant principal at Sycamore Junior High School. And that concludes my report.
Okay, I had some outside, a lot of outside things this time that relatable. First five, as a commissioner for first five, we finally got back to where we have the Community Indicators Report, which is quite interesting. It's panelists answering questions on education and diversity and economy and income trends, in-demand occupations, housing. The panelists were an economic advisor from Business Council, Vice President of Land Entitlement and Land Housing Development, Associate Professor of Finance, and a Professor of Child Development and Educational Studies. So the conversation was very intense. The questions were great. And these reports are really important because there's a lot of dialogue in this, especially identifying the trends that are happening with, with people not having enough housing, with what's going on with the children, and childcare provision. And what these do is it's very helpful because it allows us to try to have that conversation, okay, how do we get ahead of this? Or what do we do to try to slow this down or to solve some of these? So I always enjoy going to those and they're just, they're mind-boggling how much information comes through. And I'm sorry, I couldn't attend the Walk to School Day. I was disappointed, but we actually had a first five, our actual commission meeting, and we only have one every two months. So I had to attend that. And the, one of the presentations was from a Dr. Patricia Reba on Obesity Prevention and Treatment with Our Children. She has a virtual prevention program, kind of like a cartoon thing, Serving Kids Hope. She has videos that can be used in the classroom and other public awareness opportunities and they provide a group and individual treatment visits. And in case you didn't know, childhood obesity is, is, is a problem and lends itself to many, many other situations for our children, that it's just kind of like a domino. And so this was a very interesting program. I wondered if anybody has ever heard of her? Has anybody ever seen any of her videos or YouTube things? Okay, because maybe we want to, they're free. And, and we watched some of them and they were pretty good. The Bowling Fundraiser for Anaheim Outdoor Science Education and it was, it was a lot of fun. It was great to see everybody back in that environment, just having a blast, you know? And it was kind of like everybody was, the stress was just off of them and they were just bowling and having fun and kicking around and just laughing. And, and I just, I'm so glad that that's back and, and one of the, providing funding. Now, but my understanding is we are, our district is sending all sixth graders to outdoor ed. We are funding that, right? And it's still good to have this because, you know, fundraisers are great, but I'm proud of our district for having that in place, that we're going to send all the sixth graders. And the highlight for me also was to see Bob and Jenny Gardner representing again and back in full force, getting this going. There's just a lot of fun in the room. I was, had the honor, the privilege to be on a panel this past weekend through Congressman Correa for the Young Congressional Leaders Program, and it was about how government works. This was really new to me. I'd never been asked to do this, but it was kind of cool. There was about 100 high school students that met at the, at the city, City of Anaheim in, in the council chambers to hear about different elected positions. And I represented the Elementary School Board, education level. Stephen Fessel represented a council level. And then there was a trustee from Rancho Santiago, Community College District, Dr. Tina Miller. And then Congressman Correa. So it just allowed the students to learn a lot more about networks that exist in their community. And also, we elaborated on our roles as elected officials and, and they got to hear about what each of us does at, at these different levels and how we got there or, you know, what connections we made. And it was, they really had a ton of questions. They were, they sat in that room quietly for an hour. And then we had to cut off the questions because we, we just ran out of time. So it was really, it was new to me, but it was a very, it was a great experience for me. And then, let's see, it's hard to remember everything. Today, I actually went to Franklin for their College and Career Week and I was just a visitor. I wanted to go around and see what everybody, there was just so many people there. Even Sean O'Leo was there and it was fun and just, you know, the kids were, were really interested. And one of my favorites was, I think is, I want to say this correctly, he has a student there at Franklin, Major Ewiet, who was a, who is a US Space Force Major Engineer. And the Space Force was established in 2019, so it's not that old. And what he does, you know, is a lot with rockets and, and there were videos and just all kinds of things, learning about space. And, but basically his job is to protect our country, but, and through the, through space advancement and engineering technology through that. And it was just fascinating and you could have heard a pin drop. The kids were just really excited. So, and also thank you to our school administrators, all of you. You're important. We appreciate you. And I wanted to mention, I believe October 3rd was Custodial Workers Appreciation Day? Wasn't that it? And boy, we could not do it without you. So you get a big round of applause from us and thank you for being there in all those moments and keeping us running and going. And to the school administrators also, thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you, quick Philbeck. Okay, I just want to mention that I joined, I think, three PTAs with this paycheck. I'm also pacing myself. I don't know if I can afford to do all 24, but funny, funny story. I'm making more money, but making less per month, if that makes sense. So, so my checks are a little off balance right now. Anyway, so I also wanted to mention a shout out to our school administrators for the, for the week, including all you all. You're all school administrators, right? So thank you for all your hard work and all your dedication to our schools. It's really appreciated. And I'm kind of bummed because this was the first year I've missed Walk to School Day and I think 10 or 11 years since Ron was in kindergarten or something. So I wasn't able to go, so I'm sad about that, but it is what it is. And then, yeah, you made up for it. Thank you. Right. And then I, I did attend the College and Career Fair and I just wanted to point out that the pens from AEST, the ones that have the little maze and the little metal ball inside were the hit. Everyone was talking about those from the school all day long. So just thank you for being there. I appreciate our presence there and being a partner and as we prepare our kids to be college and career ready, right? So a lot of good stuff happening. That concludes my report. And so I guess we can move on to future agenda items. Are there any items you would like to add to the agenda, Board Members? No? Okay, and let's move to adjournment. Our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, October 26th, and I adjourn this meeting at 7:45 PM. Thank you, everybody. All right.